Especially in nowadays where there is internet revolution, social media revolution, is how to keep the kids in a safe, not only safely at home, but also in a mental self, mental safe. Which means that their mind should not go away from what Allah (ﷻ) has taught us. One of the biggest verses in the Quran, it says: "اليوم أكملت لكم دينكم وأتممت عليكم نعمة ورضيت لكم الإسلام دينا." Allah (ﷻ) has already completed this deen and perfected His Nama on us. And He approved Islam as a religion or pathway for us as Muslims. Let me just start with why we have, Allah (ﷻ) has perfected this deen for us. First of all, this deen is for the Quran. Is Allah (ﷻ) already created this human being. And this human being has many levels and many, it goes from the birth to the child, to the youth, to the elder, to the seniors, and to go back to from where Allah (ﷻ) wants us to go. So these are phases of development of the human being. And Allah (ﷻ) made us, as parents, responsible about this beautiful blessing that He gave all of us, which is they are our children. Our children is not only a blessing, it's also any blessing that Allah (ﷻ) gave you is connected to it as a responsibility. Allah (ﷻ) said: "اليوم أكملت لكم." He didn't say "اليوم أكملت" to me, or "لكم." In Arabic "لكم" is "to you." What does it mean? When Allah (ﷻ) give you something, it means that you have to be responsible about it. So when I tell you this is your kid, it means that you have to be responsible about your kid. Your wife, it means that you have to be responsible about your wife. So Allah (ﷻ) gave us as a Muslim the mission that He has gave us to protect this deen. "اليوم أكملت لكم" (دينكم) and another "وآتمت عليكم" "عليكم" is "on you." "نعمة ورضيت لكم" "لكم" again is "for you." So all this "for you, for you, for you," it's a blessing from Allah (ﷻ). And what is needed from you is to achieve and to complete this responsibility the way Allah (ﷻ) wanted to be completed and the way Muhammad (ﷺ) want to be completed. So I'll start with the first slide. Hopefully you are good. So the first slide is, this human being created by Allah (ﷻ), it has many component. So: "الإنسان روح وجسد، روح يتغذى من الوحي، وجسد يتغذى من الأرض، عقل يتغذى بالعلم." So this insan, the human, the human being in front of you, either he is your kid or one of the student. If you are a teacher, your student, or if you are a dad, your kids, or if you are a mom, your kids also. He has component, that they have this component has to be fed. One of the component of this component is "الروح." "الروح" is the spirit. And this Allah (ﷻ) described it is the one who: "وَنَفَخَّ فِيهِ مِن رُوح." Allah (ﷻ) He gave us a body and a "روح." This "روح" has to be fed from the above. And this body has to be fed from down, from the earth, from the plantation, from the meat, from the anything related to the earth. And the "روح" is related to be fed from above, from the "وحي," from the Quran and Sunnah. So, and the other component is this brain. Allah (ﷻ) favored the human being by having a brain. He didn't give this brain to the animals or to the other creator, but He favored the insan by having a brain. It means all these components, the "روح" and the body and the brain has to be fed. But they are fed from different sources. So "الروح" is going to be fed by "الوحي," and the body is going to be fed by the nutrition, and the "عقل" is going to be fed by the education. Another verses Allah (ﷻ) say: "والله أن بتكمن الأرض إن أبادة." Allah is giving us an example that Allah has brought you from the earth. It's like a plantation, you grow like a plantation. "ثم يعيدكم فيها." And one day you go back to the earth that you are coming from. "ثم يخرجكم إخراج." And in the day of judgment, Allah (ﷻ) will bring us back. So, that's why when we go back and we, Allah, anybody of us is going to pass away. But when we go back and we pass away, the body goes under the ground and the "روح" goes to heavens, right? So everybody will go back from where it comes from. So this spiritual dimension is "الجانب الروحي." So the spirit, how you feed this spirit? The spirit which is the heart. The heart of the human body, especially as a Muslim, you have thousands of ayat that talks about "القلب." And: "لهم قلوب لا يفقهون بها، ولاهم أعين لا يبصرون بها، ولاهم آذان لا يسمعون بها." These are the sources of, these are the component and these are the medium for getting knowledge, which is the ears, the eyes, the "قلب" and the "عقل." So those who have believed and whose heart are assured by the remembrance of Allah and consciously by the remembrance of Allah, heart are assured. So a salat, so one of the things that you have to teach your kids about how to be connected spiritually to have a strong connection with Allah (ﷻ) is by having Him, putting some schedule so where He can perform His salat time, where He has some time to read Quran, time to have dzikr, time to make dua. And preferably if the parent, mom and dad and kids, they have this together. Instead of you tell your son, "Go ahead and read your Quran," or your girls, "Go ahead and pray." Why not come kids, let's pray, let's read Quran together or let's pray together? That will make more connection, that all the family is in connection with Allah (ﷻ). Version, everybody by himself. So this is a spiritual dimension that Allah (ﷻ) created in each human being. So the next is the cognition dimension. Why we send our kids to school? So nobody can say that I cannot send my son or my girl to school. It's for a reason. This reason is to uplift their way of thinking and their way of understanding what's going on around them. So the mental action or process of acquiring knowledge, that one is named cognition dimension. "الجانب التربة والتعليم إنما العلم بالتعلم." The Rasool (ﷺ) in one of the Ahadith said: "إنما العلم بالتعلم." You wanna have, you wanna get knowledge, you have to put yourself in the path of getting knowledge. We are not here describing traditional school or modern school, but the whole idea is how to get knowledge. "إن لسمعة والبصرة والفؤادى كله أولئك كان عنه مسؤول." Allah (ﷻ) blessed you, blessed your kids with ears and with eyes. And so make sure that, try your best that these ears and eyes are fed in a halal way. So especially nowadays, we have this challenging cell phones and mass media in front of our kids. And the good news, everybody, Masha Allah, has a house and his kid is living by himself in his own room. So there is no way to police your kids in the 21st century. There is no way to keep watching on the, on your kids what they are doing every five minutes, every 10 minutes. So what does it mean? It means that you have to be creative enough by having him, putting him in some schedule, putting him in some programs where he can't, he cannot spend too much time by himself. Umar Burkhatab (رضي الله عنه) is, he was asked about the education of the kids. He said: "اشغيلواهم في الخير قبل أن يشتغلوا في الشر." It's very easy. You can, these two words that was said by Umar Burkhatab (رضي الله عنه), people, they wrote books just to explain these two words. "اشغيلواهم في الخير." Make them busy with the good before they will be busy with the bad. This is a human being, you like it or not. If you keep yourself or your kids having nothing to do, they will feel it with something wrong. Because everything around them is telling them to go to the wrong before to go to the right. What does it mean? It means that you have to put them in a program that they will spend their time, their free time in the good. Fill their time from the morning to the evening by something good, then they will not find any time for shaytan to be pulled by shaytan or to be pulled by the wrong doors or to be pulled by some wrong peers at school or elsewhere. "لهم قلوب لا يفقهون بها، ولاهم أعين لا يبصرون بها، ولاهم آذان لا يسمعون بها." "أولئك كالأنعام." Allah (ﷻ) described the people who don't use their ears and their eyes for the good. He described them, they are like the "أنعام." There is no difference between them and the animals. Because the animals, they are not given any mission in life. They are not given anything, it's just to, they are a source of good to the human being himself. But if Allah (ﷻ) blessed you with something, but you are not using it, it means that you are kind of degrading yourself to the level of the animals. If somebody has a Mercedes at home and he's putting it in the garage and he's not using forever, what's good about it, what having a car? Somebody who's having a bicycle is better than you. So same thing, if Allah (ﷻ) gave you some blessing, kids are blessing by themselves. So you have to make sure to use them for the good and don't let them be used for the bad. So Allah (ﷻ) described the whole, the entire globe as, in Quran, Allah (ﷻ) direct our eyes and our ears to watch the universe, right? "تفكرون." So, and the Ulama, they said, "There is a Quran al-mastor or Quran al-manzoor." The Quran al-mastor is the one that is a mas'ah. When you read the mas'ah, the mas'ah directs you to watch the sun, the moon, the universe, how this, the wind, how it works, that's by education. But the main thing is that is given to you and to me by Allah (ﷻ). All this is mentioned in the Quran. So, and when you, when you see, when you see the universe and you see the moon and you say: "رَبَّنَا مَا خَلَقْتَ هذَا بَاطِيلًا." It's an ayah in the verses in the Quran. So the Quran directed to the universe and when you look at the universe, you say: "رَبَّنَا مَا خَلَقْتَ هذَا بَاطِيلًا سبحانك فقينا عذاب النار." You are giving an answer to yourself by conviction. By going to the universe, you look to the universe and you go back and you say: "رَبَّنَا مَا خَلَقْتَ هذَا بَاطِيلًا." It means that you recognize the beauty and you recognize the beauty of the creation of Allah (ﷻ). So the next dimension is "العلم." "طالب العلم فريضة." The "علم" is, you are not giving a favor to your kid by sending him, sending him, sending him to school. It's a "فريضة." By Allah (ﷻ) and by the Prophet Muhammad (ﷺ), He asked us, He instructed us to send our kids for knowledge. Now when it comes, what kind of knowledge, that's another discussion. But the main thing is that kids are made to be, to learn at school, either traditional school or modern school. The only thing the parent are responsible. So "طالب العلم فريضة," not only like some Fuqaha 200 years back, they objected for girls to go to school, but Rasool (ﷺ) He said: "فريضة" and "كل مسلمين ومسلمة." Even girls, they have right to go to school, they have right to get the knowledge. And there is another Hadith: "اتلبوا العلم ولا في السين." Imagine Rasool (ﷺ) in Mecca, where there is a desert, where there is few people, where there is no source of knowledge. But at that time, the Muslim and the Arabs, they knew, they knew that there is a civilization, there is an empire named of is China. Which means Rasool (ﷺ) He directed them, you have to seek knowledge even if you go to China. So, it means what? It means you have to seek knowledge wherever you are. The whole idea is to get the knowledge. Now, how you use the knowledge for the good of the humanity, for the good of your family, for, there are some kind, two kinds of knowledge. Why we are against the material civilization in the world? Because they have knowledge, they have, they have resources, but they are using this knowledge to destroy part of the people. They, let's say somebody, he's, he's, he has knowledge, but instead of, instead of, how to say, creating or inventing a medicine to solve the problem of some sick people, he creates a pills that if somebody eat it, he will die or he'll go drown or he'll go, or he'll go. So what does it mean? There are two ways. Either you use your knowledge for the benefit of the humanity or you use your knowledge to destroy the humanity. The Muslim one, when they want from Mecca to India, to Pakistan, to North Africa, to everywhere where they want, they never think to how to harm other civilization or how to harm other society or how to harm other community. They always think how to benefit the others. That's why this is where the primordial issue between the Muslim thinkers and the Muslim scholars and the Western scholars. The Western scholars, they don't care about is this beneficial or if this harmful. So they say, the ideology of that is: "دعه يعمل، يعمل دعه يمر." "Let's say passy, let's say fair." It's a French word, which is, if you wanna tomorrow, come to me, I am a governor and you tell me, "I want a store to sell alcohol," I'll tell you, "Go ahead." Since it brings money to the tax, I will tax you, it bring money to the, to the city. Go ahead, you can sell alcohol. But in Islam is not that way. In Islam is: "دعه يعمل، دعه يمر بشرط الله يضر." "Let's say passy, let's say fair." With one condition, he should not harm people or he should not harm animals or he should not harm the environment. So, and who's telling us what is the harmful? Is the Quran and Sunnah. Is, Quran is the one who telling, Allah (ﷻ) is telling us, this is good and this is bad. The do and the don't of the Quran never, 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 how to say, always you have to go to, even when we are teaching our kids at the, at the, at the early age, we tell them, "This is haram, this is halal, do this, don't do this." The Quran is made that way. And on the top of that, Allah (ﷻ) sent us Muhammad (ﷺ) as a role model. Somebody who, who, who is Sayyid A'ish, He said: "كان قرآن يمشي." He was a walking Quran. Whenever the Quran instructs something good, Rasool (ﷺ) He did it. Whenever the Quran instructed or not to do some, Rasool (ﷺ) and the Sahabah, they prevent to do that. So, it means what? "طالب العلم." We have to seek knowledge. The only thing is you have to, you have to look for the right knowledge and the knowledge that benefit you, the community and your family and the humanity at large. There is a saying about one of the scholar in Algeria, a long time, he said: "إن لم نربي الأبناء فنحن نبني على الماء." This scholar name is Abdul Hamid bin Ubadiis. When he was giving his speech to the, to the governor and to the people around him, in order to make them focus on teaching the kids, he tell them: "إن لم نربي الأبناء فنحن نبني على الماء." If we don't teach and educate our kids, it's like you are building on a wall. So, a mission of a Muslim as a nation is to build a community of knowledge. When the community of knowledge, how you start the community of knowledge is by teaching the kids themselves. And these kids, they have to grow up and they have to be a scholar. And that's how our civilization, the Islamic civilization went from Jakarta to Tangiers is by, by giving knowledge. Instructor and Sheikh and group of people, they learn from Sheikh and that they become student. He gave them Ijaazah, then they go to another city and they start teaching and then they have around 10 around them and then they give them Ijaazah after a year or two and then these people will travel and they give them Ijaazah. That's how the Islamic knowledge is spread. So, so what he said is, you have to, in a way or another, it's a must on each dad, on each parent to educate their kids. Otherwise, it's not matter of educating your kid, it's a matter of educating the Muslim kids. Because when the Muslim kids, they have the same knowledge, they can put their knowledge in project, they can put their knowledge in programs, they can put their knowledge in event and then how, that's how they influence the community and they influence the society around them by being a good role model for the society. So, the environment dimension, never, never underestimate the environment. Allah (ﷻ) create this environment for us. We interact with a Muslim, with a non-Muslim. Our kids, they interact with a Muslim, with a non-Muslim. They interact, boys, they interact with girls, they might interact with girls, they might interact, girls with boys. So this world is not safe, 100%. So what you have to do is that you have to make sure where you put your kids. Your kids is surrounded by whom? Who's mingling with your kids? So to understand if your kids, they are well protected or not. Rasool (ﷺ) said: "يولد المرء على الفطر." Every single kid is born on the Fitra. On the Fitra, it means what? He recognize Allah. On the Fitra, he knows that there is a deity, Allah (ﷻ). On the Fitra, he recognize, if you put his finger on the, on the, on the fire, he will pull his finger because he knows that fire is not good, right? So, al-Fitra, he knows that his parents are here to protect him. That's al-Fitra. So: "فَأَبَوَاهُ يُهَوّْي دَانِهَ أو يُنَصِّرَانِهَ أو يُمَجْدِسَانِه." It means what? He's born on Islam, but if you put him in a wrong environment, he can't be anything else. It's up to you where you put your kids. So, and why I'm telling that? Because nowadays, this between court, this LPT movement, when you tell them that this is what you guys, you are doing, it's wrong, they will tell you: "وجدنا عليها أبا أنا." We find our fathers doing that, we are doing it. It means what? We are not responsible. They try to send the responsibility on their parent. "وجدنا عليها أبا أنا." This is, this is, the Quran, don't accept this. "إذا فعلوا فاحشة قالوا: وجدنا عليها أبا أنا." So you cannot, you cannot send your, your whatever, wrong doing and you put it on your parent. And the parent, they cannot put their wrong doing on their kids. Oh, because I love him too much, so, so I bought him this. Because I love my son too much, I bought him this. No. And one of, one of the wisdom that Sayyid Al-Khidr, he, he killed the boy because he was cherished too much by, by his parent. And Al-Khidr, he knows if the, if this boy will stay on the earth, he will corrupt his parent and he will corrupt the environment. So he, he made the right decision to sacrifice that and he asked Allah (ﷻ) to substitute him with some pious kids in the future. We are following our father. "كان رسول الله يملأنا ويا Прогن." The Sahabah (رضي الله عنهم), when our Sahabah (رضي الله عنه), when they were asked, how Rasool (ﷺ), where you were surrounding Rasool (ﷺ), especially at the, at the time of Mecca, they said: "كان رسول صل الله عليه وسلم يفرغنا ثم يملنا." Rasool (ﷺ) He sees the Sahabah and the kids, you have to see your kids, it's like a pot. You can empty it and you can feel it. Empty it from what? Empty it from the vice, empty it from the wrong doing. It's, you are the one responsible about how you feel the brain and the heart of your kids. It's, it's on you. Especially, especially, I always, the, the parent come to me and ask me, I tell them, as a parent, you own, you own your kids only 10 years. Especially here in the West, only 10 years. From, from one year to five year, the kid is mostly is with his mom, okay? From 15 and up, the kid is mostly is with his peers and friend and outside and especially here in America, at the 15, you buy him a car, he's got a car, he got a job. Where the dad is going to meet his son after 15? Nowhere. If they don't come, both of them, and, and meet in the mosque and pray in the mosque, there is nowhere to catch your son. He come in the night, midnight, he tell you, "Baba, I am exhausted. I want to school from 7 o'clock to 6 o'clock and I want to work from 6 to midnight." Where are you going to meet your son? So, "كان رسول الله يفرغنا ويملنا." Here is where you go. You have to, your kids, it's your responsibility and you are the one, you should put program for them. For, and, and make sure that most of, when we come to, to the West, we are corrupted by following and running after the Dunya. And the happiness of the family and the happiness of the kid is not to run after the Dunya. The Dunya, Rasool (ﷺ) He said: "ضعوها في أيديكم ولا تضعوها في قلوبكم." The Dunya, make it, put it in your hand, don't put it in your heart. Don't love the Dunya. The Dunya is just a means for the Aakhirah. So now let's move to the body dimension. So we talk about the, the spiritual dimension, which is the heart, the education, the cognition, which is the brain and, and the environment, the environment dimension. And now we have to move to the body dimension. Allah, this body is a shape, is a shape and you, and you have, Masha Allah, you have muscles, you have fingers, you have hand, you have all this. But all these are under the, under the, whatever, the brain is the one who order them some instruction to do. It means that they don't have any power other than the following what the brain tells them. So, but we live in a, we live in a world where, where the shaping of your body, it's, it gives, it gives insight about who you are. And there is a saying that what you eat is what you are, right? So in the, in the Western spectrum, they give too much value to the body. So, it means what? We live with some people that we should not ignore how we look to the other. Part of the Dawa is, that's, is you, 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 you display yourself to the other in a smiling mood, you display in a nice, so people will be attracted the first by you, by your look. And then after that, they will start asking you, "Who you are? I am a Muslim, I believe in Allah (ﷻ), I, I, I follow Muhammad (ﷺ)" Then they will start questioning. But this is the Western civilization, the look is primordial, the first thing to, to be appeared to you. So why we have to take care of our, when we are teaching or when we are educating our kids, we have to put some programs for their body. Put them in a soccer, in a basketball, in, in any, any sport so they can exercise the sport and they can feel better. So respect the hobby. If they have a hobby, if he like tennis, let him play tennis. If he likes soccer, let him play soccer. Go but what, go but what he likes because that's where he's going to excel in the future. "اشغيلواهم في الخير قبل أن يشتغلوا في الشر." This, we talk about it. "نعمتان مغبون فيهما كثيئ من الناس السحاق والفراغ." There is a Hadith of Muhammad (ﷺ) that many people, we have free time, but we don't know how to use it. Many people, they envy you because you have free time and, and you are, you are healthy, Masha Allah. There are people, Allah (ﷻ), they are through a trial or through a sickness, but you are good, you are healthy. Use this health and use this free time for the good. "نعمتان مغبون فيهما كثيئ من الناس." Two blessings, health and free time. Many people, they don't have it and they wish they have it. And they say, the only way to recognize the Nima and the blessing of Allah (ﷻ) on you is when you go and you visit the hospitals. Go and visit the hospitals and you see the sick people. By that time you say, "Oh, Allah gave me health and I'm not using it for the right. I'm not using it for the, to do Qiyamul Layit, to wake up at 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock and pray for to help it." I'm, I'm not using it for the right. I'm, I'm not using it to go and visit my friend. I'm not using it to give a ride to my friend to the airport. I'm not using it to, to help a needy or something like that. So if Allah (ﷻ) gave you a health, gave you free time, try your best to use it. And how you educate your kids is by taking him with you. Take your kids wherever you go. Take them with you so he can learn from their dad and their mom, how to help others, how to visit the sick, how to do things right in life. Because 99% of the kids, they follow, and they will, they will be kind of another image of their dad or their mom. So, and there is another saying, or some of the people, they said, it's a Hadith, but it's not a Hadith. They say: "Al-dismu salim, fil-aqlis salim." If you have a body, a good shape, supportive, your, your brain is clean and you can, it's, it means what? It means all these components, they have connection to each other. If you feel good about yourself, about your body, your spirit and your brain should feel good and vice versa too. So: "Allimu awladakum, al-rimaaya, al-sibaha, wa rukub khair." Rasool (ﷺ) he instruct us as a parent to teach our kids some of the activity, sport activity. At that time, it was al-rimaaya and al-sibaha, which is swimming, and rukub khair and horsing. But doesn't mean that sport is limited to only these ones, but every generation, they have their own sport. And I heard from Sheikh Hamza Yusuf, one time describing this Hadith, which is amazing, a rephrasing of Sheikh Hamza Yusuf. He said, why we have to teach our kids al-rimaaya, you know, the archery? Why we teach? He said that because it teaches them how to focus. How to focus in prayer, how to focus when you are reading the Quran, how to focus when you are playing. It means what? You learn the focus. At this time, from this, from 9 to 9:15, I wanna focus on memorizing Quran. And from 9:15 to this, I wanna focus on doing my homework. From, so the kid, when the rimaaya, the archery, it teaches him the focus. And al-sibaha, why you teach our kids al-sibaha? Is that Sheikh Hamza Yusuf, he said that Natasio, Allah (ﷻ) swimming, when you are swimming, when you are learning swimming, is you are learning how to, how to put problems on the side. You are using your hand, okay, a wave is coming, I wanna put it on the side with my right hand. Another wave is coming, I wanna put it on the side, but your target, you are going from A to B, to B. It means that you are focusing again to go from one station to another, but there are waves, there are problems in life. Life is not straight, life is ups and downs. So when you have this down, you have to know how to overcome these, these things. That's why you have to know how to navigate. So, and rukub khair and Sheikh Hamza Yusuf, he described that the horsing, why you teach our kids the horsing? Is, he said that if somebody knows how to manage a horse, he knows how to manage a nation. He knows how to manage a community. That, when he learned at the early age how to manage a horse, it means that he knows how and when he use the right, the right word, for the right action, for the right behavior, for the right things. So you cannot have, you cannot go to a Janazah and you talk to the people about, and you say joking, you are joking to make people laugh. You cannot do that. It's a, it's a common sense. You are in a Janazah, you have to give the Janazah its own, so, and vice versa. So the Muslim should know where I wanna use things that will impact people and will influence my surrounding. Thus also, again, when you teach your kids these things, that he will not make mistakes in his life and people will take him as a role model. So, the social dimension, this is the last dimension that we have to make it when you are putting schedule for your, Alhamdulillah, as Islamic center of Arabic, we provide too many of the activity of social dimension. Social dimension is when the Muslim come together. When they come together for a project. We are having a Sira conference next week. We are bringing, we are asking parent to bring their kids, their girls. It's a Moul danabah week, we celebrate it, and we are one family at the end. So what is social dimension? Is in Arabic, they name it: "Al-janibul ishtimai." Weddings, picnics, carnivals, community breakfast, games, tournament. All these are bring people together and bring Muslim together, and we have to give this a priority also in our life. Your kid and my kid, they are not going to live in silo by themselves. They have to live with the people. They have to make mistake in their life, and they have their kids or their peers, they will correct them. Sometimes they correct them in annoying way, but at the end, they have to interact with the people. That's the social. The only thing is, we are a Muslim, we have some manners that should be implemented in our houses, in our Masjid, in our community, and we instruct and we educate our kids with these manners. So little by little, they will be responsible. And I see it in the kids of the community. They give me hard time when they are at the age of 10, 11, 12, and at the age of 14, 15, I start, they start respecting and they start, and you ask them to bring this table, bring this chair, they bring it and they help. It's just matter of suffer, it's matter of patience on these kids. It's matter of, they are not mature. So, but at the end, we have to take them through the curve, the learning curve, but, and they become a good asset for our community in the future. So, some of the social dimension is visiting friend, going to, visiting the sick, going to the hospitals, itibaar Janazah, going to the Janazah, following the Janazah. All this, it teaches the kids the empathy, the big brothers, the visit, visiting, the empathy, and teaching them things in life that they needed down the road in, in their life. So the parent responsibility. I already started with this one, I wanna finish with this one. "You will seekumullahu fi awladikum." This is a verses from, from the Quran. Allah (ﷻ) said: "You will seekumullahu fi awladikum." Allah (ﷻ) is telling you to take care of your kid. It's not a favor from you. You are doing this as Ibadah to Allah (ﷻ). You wanna be close to Allah (ﷻ), you should take care of your kids. It's just, don't go to your kids and you tell them, I am doing this for you, you have to do this for me. It's not, it's not that way. Okay, maybe you said that to your friend, but not to your kids. Your kids, it's a must to do, to teach them and to educate them the right way and the right, in the right manners. So, I wanna open the floor for the, for the question. If you have any question, I can answer, and I'll try my best to answer. Jazakumullah. I think we have... Anybody want to ask question? We have... Bismillah. Barakallah. Okay, if you have a question, we can end our discussion, Insha Allah. Subhanakallah wa bihamdik. Nashehdon laa ilaha illa ant. Nastaafir kuan atubu alaik. Jazakumullah khair, barakallah.